Good evening. I'm Sidney Evering, the city administrator, and on behalf of Orangeburg City Council, I'd like to welcome you to the swearing-in ceremony for the offices of Mayor, District 1, District 3, and District 5. A fundamental tenet of our democracy is the right to vote. And as you know, many heroes of the past fought and died for this right. On this past September 9th, the citizens of Orangeburg exercised their right to vote and re-elected and elected the leaders that will be sworn in this evening. We have all witnessed the political discontent our nation has faced lately and the devastating consequences of what can happen when it spirals out of control. This among many reasons is why it is imperative we come together as one community, one city, and support one another as we work together to move Orangeburg forward. You, the voters, have spoken, and you should expect nothing less. With that said, I'd like to thank all of the candidates who ran for the city offices and were willing to serve the citizens of Orangeburg. I'd like to extend a warm thank you to Mr. Richard Strowman and his wife, Monty, for the years of dedicated service to the citizens of Orangeburg District 1. Our new council members will be sworn in as followed. Mr. Michael Butler will be sworn in as mayor with Judge Pandora Jones Glover administering the oath. I would ask that all of the elected officials will stand to my left, along with any family and friends that you would have come onstage, and the judges, of course, will stand to our right. For purposes of streaming, we ask that you speak into the mics so everyone in the virtual world can hear us. Mr. Jordan E. Hawkins will be sworn in as city council District 1 representative with Judge Derek Dash administering the oath. Mr. Jerry Hannah will be sworn in as city council 3 district representative. Judge James Rickenbacker will administer the oath. And Ms. L. Zimmerman Kit will be sworn in as district, as city council District 5 representative, with again Judge Pandora Jones Glover administering the oath. I'd also like to take a moment on behalf of Ms. Kit to recognize these special young people from Project Life Positene in the audience. Will you please raise your hand and be recognized, please? I know Ms. Kit works tirelessly to help pour into the lives of these young folks, and we thank you so much for your attendance. As we begin, I'd like to take a moment to extend our deepest sympathies to the families of those who were harmed or injured this past weekend. Especially the family and friends of Ms. Jaleah Butler, who tragically lost her life. Our hearts certainly go out to you. Please know the city of Orangeburg stands with you and the entire South Carolina State University family. At this time, I'm going to ask Judge Virgin Johnson to come and bring forth a prayer.
Would everyone please bow their heads with me, please? Dear God, your word says in Matthew 23:11, "Let the greatest among you be servants." Tonight, I pray for our mayor and our city council, our city manager, and our city staff that we all are and will continue to be great servants of and for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina. We thank you for all of the council persons who have been re-elected to their new terms. We thank you for Councilman Hawkins, as he tonight beginning his new term of service with this council. And also, dear God, we thank you for Councilman Strowman for his many years of devoted and loyal service to the city of Orangeburg. Dear God, give them wisdom, knowledge, integrity, compassion, and the determination to serve the citizens of this great city and to make the city of Orangeburg greater than it's ever been. Please, God, bring ethnic unity and financial prosperity to the city of Orangeburg as this city becomes a model for the state and this country. Lastly, please give the new council that is being sworn in vision and a corporate spirit, your spirit, for tomorrow's leadership. Please hear and grant my prayer. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Judge Johnson, for that very pertinent and needed prayer. Next, we'd like to ask Ms. Kristin Jamison to come forth and sing our national anthem.
Good evening. Please stand for the singing of the national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous flight O'er the red hearts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare The bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, doth that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Always a stern rendition, always. Thank you so much, Ms. Jamison. Okay. Our first oath of office will be administered to Michael C. Butler as mayor of the city of Orangeburg. I'm going to ask Mayor Butler to come forward with your family and friends who would like to join you, and also Judge Pandora Jones Glover.
I would like for my mother to come, my godson, and James Howard.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am honored to stand here once again to administer the oath of office for my friend and our mayor. This is special because this is his fourth term, and I just think that that is, that's awesome. I think, I think that that is a testament to the confidence and trust that the citizens have in him. I think the citizens believe in you, they value you, and they believe in your leadership. Again, I commend you and congratulations. If you would, repeat after me. As mayor of the municipality of the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust reposed in me. I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected. So help me God. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified according to the constitution of the state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected. I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof preserve, protect, and defend the constitution of the state of South Carolina and of the United States of America. So help me God. Congratulations.
Next, we're going to ask Mr. Jordan Hawkins and his family and her friends to come forward. The oath of office will be administered by Judge Derek Dash.
As a council member of the municipality of the city of Orangeburg, I will equally, fairly, and impartially, to the best of my ability and skill, exercise the trust reposed in me, and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected. So help me God. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified according to the constitution of the state to exercise the duties of this office to which I have been elected, and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the constitution of the state of South Carolina and of the United States of America. So help me God. Congratulations.
Next, representing District 3, we're going to ask Mr. Jerry Hannah to come forward with any family members or friends that he would like to join him. The oath of office will be administered by Judge James Rickenbacker.
Thank you. Call Ms. Jerry Hannah, my wife, and Ms. Mamie Elmore, Smatty Thomas, the Myers family, and our good pastor, H.T. Ganey, to come forward, please.
Oh, I didn't see you, daughter, while I... Everybody, everybody's leg sits up here, okay?
As a council member of the municipality of the city of Orangeburg,
As a council member of the municipality of Orangeburg,
South Carolina, I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust reposed in me and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected. So help me God. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified according to the constitution of the state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve protect and defend the constitution of the state of South Carolina and of the United States of America. So help me God. Congratulations.
Okay. And last, but certainly not least, Ms. L. Zimmerman Kit, representing District 5. Will you please come forward with any family and friends that you would like to join you onstage? Her oath will be administered by Judge Pandora Jones Glover.
Thank you so very much. I would like for my sister, Evia Thomas, and Ms. Summers to come forward.
All right. Okay, you're going to repeat after me. As council member of the municipality of the municipality of the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, I will equally, fairly, and impartially, to the best of my ability and skill, exercise the trust reposed in me. Exercise the trust? Exercise the trust? The trust, the trust, the trust. Reposed in me. In me. I will use I will use I will use my best endeavors preserve and carry into effect according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected. So help me God. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the constitution of the state to exercise the duties of of the office to which I have been elected. I will to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve protect and defend the constitution of the state of South Carolina and of the United States of America. So help me God.
Please join me in congratulating Mayor Michael Butler, Councilman Jordan Hawkins, Councilman Jerry Hannah, and Councilwoman Kit for their elections and reelections to the Orangeburg City Council. I am so fortunate to serve on your behalf. I look forward to working with each of you and all of Orangeburg City Council as we work together to move the city forward and represent the will and interest of all of our citizens. So I thank you so much for your dedicated public service. Thank you again. This concludes our ceremony, but I will, I'm going to ask you to please remain seated as council exits to my right. They have work to do. We still have a council meeting that will be beginning here shortly, so they're going to exit over into the, and go into the council chambers. We will pick up with our council meeting, and if you would like to join us there, we invite you to do so. Council members will be available for pictures and anything that they would like to do with you all after the council meeting. So at this time, will council please exit to my right? Again, thank you all so much for attending this evening. Again, if you would like to join us for the council meeting, that is perfectly fine, and we look forward to having you. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much.
London, you got a penis. This is a population lady. We got all the council members. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Certainly, we happy for all of y'all that came over and stayed with us, stayed with us throughout the council. We promise you, we won't hold you long. Let us bow his, please. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for this council meeting. We ask you to continue to bless and keep us in all things. Thank you for us taking our new oath, leading, guiding us, keep us, bring unity and harmony among us. And we thank you for all these blessings in your name we pray. Amen. We want y'all to come on. Project Life, y'all can come in and have a seat on the front rows, any rows. This is Project Life after school program. That our councilman Kidd is created. Founded. So we wanna, they've been together over thirty something years. Any seats over here? Here's some seats over here on the front row, right by Chief Austin. There you go. There's some seats by Chief, he was on the back. Okay, we, our next, um, next item of business, we want to continue. We use, after we have election, we usually elect a mayor pro temp. And we, we receive recommendations from the city council, and we vote on them. So at this time, we would like to receive any recommendations for mayor pro temp.
Okay, I would like to nominate, uh, council member Kalu for mayor pro temp in the city of Orangeburg.
Dr. Kalu has been nominated.
I would also like to make a nomination for Dr. Kalu Kalu as mayor pro temp.
Dr. Kalu. Anybody else? Any more, any more nominations? If not, we gonna close on this said name. We'd like to entertain, we, motion, motion has been made for Dr. Kalu, and we'd like to entertain a second.
Second.
Motion has been second by Councilman Notts, all in favor? Any opposed? As have the motion is carried. Dr. Kalu would be the mayor pro temp. Consideration of September sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, City Council minutes.
Mayor and council, I move the adoption of the city council minutes.
Second motion.
Motion has been made by Dr., by Dr. L. Zimmerman Kidd. And second by, by Dr. Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
The recognition of character community, uh, the, the, of October community of character trait is integrity. Integrity is the quality of being honest and having a strong moral practice, principles. And we're gonna ask all our citizens, if you would, if you would demonstrate this, uh, this is a community of character trait integrity as we continue to go through our, our lives. Thank you. We have retirees' resolutions. Mr. James R. Hares, Hires, seat of Orangeburg.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I would like to, uh, to bring to your attention the retiring of Mr. James Hires, Jay Hires, who is with our Parks and Rec Department. Jay retired back on Sept- September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, after twenty-five years, one month, and eight days of service. As many of you know, Jay, Jay has been instrumental, was instrumental in caring for our beloved Edisto Gardens. He was an absolute specialist expert when it came to roses. In fact, I understand that Jay had a rose officially named after him. His loss will be immense in terms of his knowledge and what he's been able to do on behalf of the citizen, citizens of Orangeburg in relations to the Edisto Memorial Gardens. So he will certainly be missed. I'm going to, at this moment, ask Mr. Sean Taylor, our Parks and Rec Director, to come forward and say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Mr. Everett, yes, Mr. Harry James Hires is truly gonna be missed. His knowledge as it relates to the roses, as our administrator has indicated, is immense. And he was honored about two years ago by the American Rose Society by hibernizing a rose that is now called the James Hires Rose, and it is found in the Edisto Gardens. So him and his son, uh, hibernized it and patented, and the American Rose Society honored them with that honor two years ago. We're, we're very fortunate to have him as a part of our family for so many years, and his knowledge is truly gonna be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, it's every, I would like to read the resolution. Whereas James H. M. Hires faithfully served the city of Orangeburg for twenty-five years and one month and thirteen days with the retirement date of September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas he through his long, long and faithful service contributed greatly to the successful operation of the city of Orangeburg, and whereas the city council, in recognition of the fine contributions rendered, the city of Orangeburg wants to inscribe on record its appreciation. Now therefore be reserved that the mayor and members of council and council assembly do officially recognize the faithful service rendered to the city of Orangeburg in the capacity in which he served the city, and we take pride in commending him for a job well done. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution in appreciation for his devotion and duty to the city of Orangeburg be placed in the minute book of the city and a copy furnished to Mr. Hires in recognition of his service passed by city council of the city of Orangeburg, state of South Carolina, this seventh day, October the twenty-fifth. Let's give Mr. Hires a hand.
And Mayor, at this time, I would just like to congratulate, um, Mr. Eer, and I hope he will have a wonderful, um. Retirement. He's done an excellent job with us for a long, long time. It's been wonderful working with him throughout the recreation department. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Next up, we have another retiree resolution for another longtime city employee. Sergeant Arnie Lucas with the Orangeburg Department of Public Safety, retired on April eleventh of this year after thirty years, six months, and six days of service. That's an incredibly, uh, long and faithful tenure, and we're so grateful for his years of service with ODPS. And at this time, I'm gonna ask Chief Austin to come forward and share a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Everett, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It is a privilege to speak to you about Sergeant Lucas. He was known throughout the agency as Big Sarge. And yes, he was a tall guy and medium build, but he had a tremendous heart, a giant-sized heart about him. While he was with the agency, he served as our fugitive warrants coordinator, also was the agency armorer and range master, and he coordinated the River Ridge Ramble, a project throughout the agency in which we collected used bicycles, restored them, and presented them to children throughout the community during the holiday season. When I think about Arnie Lucas, uh, he truly represents what I believe to be a servant with integrity, and, and we're certainly going to miss him, but we wish him well in his retirement.
Thank you. We want to read the resolution. Whereas Mr. Arnie Lucas faithfully served the city of Orangeburg thirty years, six months, and six days with the retirement date of April the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. And he through his long and faithful service contributed greatly to the successful operation of the city of Orangeburg, and whereas the city council, in recognition of his fine contribution rendered to the city of Orangeburg, wants to inscribe on records its appreciation. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and members of council in council assemble do officially recognize the faithful service rendered to the city of Orangeburg in the capacity in which he served the city, and we take pride in commending him for a job well done. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution in appreciation for his devotion and duty to see, to the city of Orangeburg be placed in the minute book of the city and a copy furnished by, to Mr. Lucas in recognition of his services passed by city council of the city of Orangeburg, the state of South Carolina, this seventh day, October two thousand twenty-five. Let's give Mr. Lucas a hand, please. Thank you.
Mayor and council, unfortunately, obviously, Mr. Hires and Sergeant Lucas could not join us this evening, so I'm going to present their, uh, copy of the resolution and watch to their respective directors, uh, and hopefully, y'all will get, make sure they get.
Sergeant Lucas will also be presented with his commemorative axe.
With his what?
Commemorative axe that is presented through the fire division, and we'll be getting that to him as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Old Business, item number five.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number five is third reading of an ordinance amending Chapter Five Police Regulations of the City Code by adding Section Five dash thirty-one, hate, intimidation. For your recollection, this is the, uh, the hate crimes ordinance that, that you all have reviewed for the past two council meetings. Just by way of, just to remind, as a reminder, it would make it unlawful for any person to cause fear or, or of harm, injury, or damage to a victim or property because of the victim's actual or perceived race, ethnicity, national origin, color, religion, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity. It would provide for a five hundred dollar fine or misdemeanor of, it will be a misdemeanor in thirty days in prison or both. At the last council meeting, I believe it was Councilwoman Greve has had a question regarding, um, if political affiliation would also be covered under this ordinance, and our city attorney was gonna do some research, and at this time, I'll turn it over to him.
A- as I've indicated previously, uh, obviously, First Amendment-type situations are very thorny is probably the best word to use. There's probably two hundred and thirty approximately years of precedent about First Amendment law, and so at present, my recommendation is that if council wants to give this third reading while we continue to do research on those issues and come back in the next few months with potential updates, if council would take action at that point to make amendments, so that in the interim, this has already been adopted by council. Obviously, council can certainly make amendments tonight, um, but those would be without the benefit of those two hundred and thirty years worth of First Amendment precedent.
Are there any discussion of this before I read this? I think your recommendation is great.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion before I read the, um, ordinance, amending Chapter Five Police Regulations of the City Code by adding Section Five dash three, hate intimidations, and providing for other matters, other related matters. We'd like to entertain a motion.
I move for passage.
Motion has been made by Councilman Greve.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Notts. All in favor? Any opposed? I say that the motion is carried. We have nine, item number six on the old business.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number six is second reading of an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the city of Orangeburg to update the class schedule as required by Act one seventy-six of two thousand twenty. As I indicated to you all at the last meeting, this is an update that is required by state law every two years. The Municipal Association sets forth the ordinance that will update the, um, the schedules, the business license schedules. Just again, to highlight a few of the changes, manufacturing, uh, will go from class nine point eight to class three, which is a higher rate. Transportation and warehousing changes from class one to class two, which is a higher Transportation, warehousing changes from class one to class two, which is a higher rate. The following classes are, are moving to classes with lower rates. Real estate and rental lease changes from class seven to class six. Professional scientists and technical services changes from class five to class four, and healthcare and social assistance changes from class four to class threes. So those are lower rates. But those are the only changes that, that are, are worth noting. Again, this is required every, uh, two years.
Uh, thank you, sir. Were there any connecting issues for the ups and downs of the rates?
Could you further explain what you mean?
You changed several categories.
Yes, that, that, yes, sir.
Was there a defining element to each one of them as to why you changed, why they were changed?
That I do not know. I could find out, I can ask the Municipal Association what prompted the change.
Oh, the Municipal Association recommended.
Yes, sir.
This something they do every.
We did.
Every, no.
No, okay.
Any more questions about, um, the business license before I read the ordinance?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
We said like real estate goes from a six to a five, a lower rate. Is there a percentage-wise or estimate, estimation of what that reduction is?
The actual reduction should be in your package, but if it's not, I can certainly, um, get you a copy of it. Let me see if I, if I have it here. Actually, I, I do not see it, but I, I do have it, so I can get, we'll get you a copy of it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more? If not, Ordinance Two, number two, twenty twenty-five, uh, amending the city business license ordinance to update the class schedule and provide for other related matters. We'd like to entertain a motion.
Still move, man.
Motion has been made by Councilman Hannah.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Everett, we have our new business, um, Community Chat.
Yeah, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council, I wanted to update you and the public on a new forum that the city will, um, be providing for our citizens. It was the brainchild of, uh, Councilwoman Grievous. It's called Community Chats, and the intention is to educate and, and update the community on different items as it relates to the operation of city government. We realize that sometimes there can be some confusion or, or misleading information out in the public sphere. So we have scheduled quarterly, uh, forums that the public will be invited to attend, and, uh, members of our staff will, um, be providing, uh, education and information, uh, to, to the public. Those forums will be held in the Stevenson Auditorium. The first one will actually be next week, October fourteenth at six o'clock. It will, um, consist of money matters is what we entitled, entitled it. And, um, the public will be, uh, provided information on what makes up your utility bill and what makes up property taxes. They will have an opportunity to submit questions beforehand, uh, that we will do our best to, to answer. And again, just really provide an, an opportunity to, to educate the public. The next quarterly meeting will be February twenty-fourth. It's entitled Safety First, Understanding Public Safety and Emergency Services. Followed by, uh, the next forum is Tuesday, May twelfth, uh, entitled Living Well. We'll be providing information regarding our Parks Recreation and Community Services. And then the last scheduled quarterly meeting will be Building Orangeburg, scheduled for Tuesday, July twenty-eighth. We'll be learning about city planning and infrastructure. I would encourage you and all of your constituents to consider attending. Again, this will be held, um, at six o'clock in the evening in Stevenson Auditorium right next door. And this is, I feel, an excellent opportunity to educate the public.
I just think this is wonderful, Ms. Grievous, I just wanna give you a shout out. Cause that'll keep us closer to our voters. Once they close to our voters, then they can understand what's going on. We can dispel a lot of talk, things that, that they didn't quite understand. We can expel that, and we can, we as a council can talk to each, uh, and I'd encourage all councilmembers, let's come to it so that we can represent our people. That is wonderful. And just make sure that it's publicized everywhere, that people are made aware of it, that they can come. I think it's, I think it's good.
It's on our website, there are flyers with Q R codes. Again, if you, if anyone from the public wants to submit questions beforehand, so we can be sure to answer any questions.
That's wonderful.
They are, um, welcome to, to go on our webpage and, and do so.
I really want to thank you for this, because so many people asked so many questions, but now it's open to the public so they can come in and hear exactly what's going on here.
Yes, yes.
And we just appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll go ahead, Mr. Hannah.
Yes, sir, Mayor. It, it has a starting time of six P M, is this a sixty minutes or?
It's, I'm sorry, it's six P M to seven thirty, so it's an hour and a half.
Ninety minutes.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any, anybody?
Uh, Mr. Stedden.
Yes, sir.
Apart from this schedule, are you thinking of reactivating our Public Relations Department?
Yes, we, we, we have engaged a, um, Public Relations Firm, uh, Forsight Communications, I think Holly is there. She is one of the members of that firm, and they have been instrumental in helping us put, put together this information, and, uh, will be doing so moving forward.
All right, yeah, we need that.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Everett.
Thank you, thank you.
We get a chance to hear from Mr. Wade Holmes tonight. He's sitting in for Warren Harley.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and members of council.
Good evening.
D P U have two items on the agenda tonight. The first would be the approval for the, of the, for the manager of D P U to accept and sign agreement for, uh, federal grid, uh, resiliency grant in the amount of six hundred and eighty-nine, eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. We're pleased to be, that we're, we're awarded this grant through the Department of Energy, um, for, and it would be used for the upgrading and building of portions of our D P U transmission lines and poles. As part of the agreement, as part of the grant acceptance process, the awarding agency requires that an authorized representative design the grant agreement, which would be Mr. Harley. And I'm respectfully requesting the permission from, um, from the city council to allow Mr. Harley to sign the agreement on behalf of the Department of Public Utilities. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions about this grant, the amount of money, uh, that we getting? We ought to be saying, thank you, Lord. How much you said was?
Six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
And this is, uh, helping to prevent outages?
Yes, sir, it helped upgrade our transmission loop, which are the big power lines that feed from substation to substation. Most of that, um, grid itself is roughly thirty to forty years old, so we can hopefully take this and, and definitely do a part, good port, a good segment of it, to help, uh, like I said, destabilize our system. And this actually was one of the first grants that we actually applied for and actually, and actually won, won approval for.
Great. The public should really appreciate the Department of Public Utility, anytime you can prevent outages and long-term outages, cause when, when the lights go out, they call us, our phone ring, I don't care what time of night it is. So we really appreciate you, uh, now, by the way, some of you don't know that, but Mr. Holmes is the director of the Electric Division at D P U, and he's a good man, he works hard.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you. We would like to entertain a motion to accept this, uh, uh, this grant.
I have one more question, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Holmes, is there any match on that, or is that just?
Oh, yes, it's a, um, twenty-five percent match. We will be putting up two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, um, either in, um, cash or in kind service.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that was twenty-five percent of that total?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That's it, George?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'd like to entertain a motion to accept the grant, please.
Mayor and council, I move that we accept the grant for the Department of D P U manager to accept and sign the agreement for federal grid resilience grant in the amount of six hundred and eighty-nine, uh, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the next on the agenda is the resolution recognizing October sixth through the tenth of two thousand twenty-five as Customer Service Week. Mayor and council, I'm honored to present this resolution recognizing Customer Service Week for the city of Orangeburg, D P U. Every day, our employees go above and beyond, uh, to serve our customers and with professionalism, kindness, and dedication. Whether we, whether it's just answering a call, resolving a concern, or simply offering a warm greeting, these interactions shape how our community experiences the D P U. This week is an opportunity to pause and say thank you to the frontline staff, to the support teams, excuse me, and for everyone who works hard behind the scenes to make the D P U run smoothly. I respectfully ask that the council adopt this resolution and join me in celebrating our outstanding customer service that makes our city shine.
Yeah, great. Appreciate you, Mr. Holmes.
And Mayor, I would just like to say, thanks so much for the, um, week of employees, uh, because it was so wonderful to give them the time to come and celebrate the work that they do here in Orangeburg.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's just a blessing, and we thank you very much.
You're welcome. Teamwork make the dream work.
Thank you, Wade.
You're welcome, sir.
Appreciate you.
Okay.
That, uh, that being all?
That concludes. That's the conclusion. No more.
Yeah, we know. Know that. We don't have anything. We thank, we want to thank y'all tonight for coming and being with us. Thank you for all that you all, you all do as far as supporting city council. And we want you to have a good night, and we would like to have a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kalu, second by Councilman Kit, all in favor? All right. Eyes have, motion is carried. Good night, and thank y'all.
We'd like for council, uh, project likes to come up and get a picture with the council member and Mayor.